America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Percy, Snyder, Artella, Trup, Ister.
All right, very good. Welcome everyone to the nice meeting. See on the agenda, first item up is the approval of minutes and reports. For those that are highlighted, I guess you'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes and reports as shown.
Artella?
Yes.
Trup?
Yes.
Ister?
Snyder?
Yes.
Before we actually discuss the agenda with the audience comment, I'd also like to just make note of an addition or a slight modification under discussion of the 2014 budget. Tonight we'll actually be looking to vote on the first reading this evening of the 2014 city budget with the expectation that we would actually move towards having our second reading on December 23rd. So I'd just like to make note that we will be having that vote this evening. And I guess with that, is there any audience comment at this time to the agenda as noted, or anything else at the start of the meeting? Yes, if you could just again let us know where you are.
Regina Russell, Councilman Snyder, when you say reports, is that the monthly or quarterly reports that each council member is supposed to have submitted?
Not actually the council members, but the actual various departmental reports.
Yes. But that is done by the council members? Or they sign off or approve them?
That's done by their respective department heads, which are, you have a management team, and then you've got obviously the council people as directors.
So that does, so those reports don't fall, fall under where it says on the website what their responsibilities are, so that would make you director of accounting?
You're, everybody, each department, for example, gets their own report submitted. Then we have an opportunity as a council as a whole to review them, either independently before they're submitted, or as a group, and then of course we vote on just accepting those reports in each meeting.
And where are they filed for the public to, uh, review?
As with all reports, those are all filed at the city clerk's office, so you can get those upon request.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, I guess with no further comment, we'll have to close the agenda for this evening. And the first item on the list is an update from SRI if we have any representation. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Light Fest Committee will be hosting the Santa Parade on November 29th. We're also, under the Spark Committee, we're seeking additional funding partners for the SPP program, which is the new terminology for the program which we have formerly been requesting funding under, which was called the NPP program. In addition, we'll be holding a hometown veterans banner celebration, returning the banners on November 21st from 2:00 to 4:30 at the SRI office, and light refreshments will be provided. Business and Econ is conducting surveys on how best to attract new businesses into the area. And I wanted to give a couple of updates on the New Year's Eve committee. We have all the entertainment scheduled, which is Brent Kessler, Free Horse Run, Carrot Drive, Kingdom Kids Puppet Show, and there will be a late night skate at the Ice Henny Grill, as well as a tribute band titled Bad Medicine, which is a Bon Jovi tribute band. Additionally, Lenape Solar, in conjunction with Triangle Tech, is creating a bulb, a new bulb for us to be using in the ceremony this year. So we're excited about the unveiling of that. Lastly, we are looking for volunteers, December 2nd through the 4th. We're planning to do painted windows downtown. It'll be like a storybook type of thing for Christmas time and for the late night shoppers night. We want to have it completed by December 4th. We have a lot of volunteers out there, and we intend to have that late night shoppers from 6:00 to 9:00 on December 4th, excuse me, Thursday, December 5th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. Anybody have any questions?
Is there any comments? Well, thank you very, very much. Should, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, of course, is an update in regard to redevelopment authority. Sharone?
The actual thing we're here for is to approve the engineering firm of the Chestnut Street project, not certain kind of, that's okay. I handed out the bid cap for the engineering firms that submitted proposals for the engineering of the Chestnut Street project. As you can see, there was quite a array of prices and times that they felt the project would take. But when you average out all those times that were submitted to come out, with about four months worth of project as being the average. So if you look at the pricing and the amount of time, CES engineering, which is leasing, or it used to be with Bucart Horn, but now it's with CES, is the best price for the amount of work that you're going to get at forty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Lee is also doing the engineering for the clearance demolition with the CDPG funded demolition project. So he's already going to be here. So he is familiar with the city. He worked on the Riverfront project as well. So I think all around, it would be the best choice, and I recommend that council award that engineering, right, CES engineering, for worth of two thousand five hundred dollars.
I'll make that form of motion unless there's any questions. Why, why such a big difference in prices?
A lot of times-
And Booker Horn to them, I mean, since, since the guys from both used to work at Booker Horn, now is there, why such a big difference?
Candidly, my answer is that the people that put in over a hundred thousand dollars don't want the work. They submitted for it, but, you know, they're not really interested in, they have enough work to be doing that they don't need that work. So that, a lot of times, is the big difference. You'll notice KPI Technology put in a very low cost for eight weeks. I did talk to Tim DeNevils with KPI, and when I looked through his proposal, what he did was put an estimated price based on percentages of cost, estimating that it would be just nineteen eighty-five. So he didn't really give you a firm price on it. It would have been percentage of cost that some engineering firms sometimes do, and we do not want that. So I did talk to Tim about that, but-
It just made me wonder, since we have Booker Horn doing a lot of stuff for us, it just made me think we were open-
Yeah, I did not talk to Bucart Horn, but I'm just assuming that they have enough work on their plate that they, you know, always are willing to work in the city, but did not necessarily need this particular work right now.
An overhead cost factor into that too, Regina?
Yeah. And, and I know Lee took into consideration that he's already, already going to be here for the demolition projects. So he didn't need to charge travel twice or anything more than that.
So at least in the contract, there are specifics in the scope of work as far as what output we're going to see for the money?
Yes, yes.
One second, that then.
Trup?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Artella?
Yes.
I just have a couple other things that we don't want.
Sure.
On the 21st, that's next Thursday, around 4:15-ish, the mayor and I are going to be meeting out of municipal authority with Dan Raymer to go over the software and mapping that they have available for that code enforcement activity we discussed at the last meeting. So if anybody on Council District City is coming over there on the 21st around 4:15, feel free. And next Wednesday, here at City Hall at 10, we're having the pre-construction conference with Steinbacher and CTS for the demolition of pre-temple homes up front in 702 Chestnut. Again, you're welcome to attend that. That's all.
Thank you. All right, with any, without any further unfinished business, looking to move on to new business. The approval of pay invoices and vouchers, basically looking to make a motion this evening that we take care of our outstanding payables in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand three hundred fifteen dollars and eighty-three cents from the general fund. And then making note that in regards to the Wolferton Street project, looking to make payables, the amount outstanding of one hundred thirty-seven thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars and eighteen cents. Take that as a motion?
Wait, is that kind of a little fuel fund? That's-
No, no, no.
It's not a, it's not a good fuels, that's, that's just a separate breakout.
That's the other one, that's one's money.
It's just going to be reimbursed. How's it doing?
No, that's the money we owe them. They send us the grants from paint.
Well, that's what I meant, yeah.
Everything that's belonged down there is reimbursed.
Just since it's a larger amount, that's why it was noted separately, just for everyone's preference.
Second one.
Thank you.
Ister?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Artella?
Yes.
Trup?
Yes.
Next item is tax exoneration. Again, we have included in our usual packets, the report, requesting exoneration this evening for the individuals listed, for the amount shown and the reasons indicated. Make that in form of a motion.
Snyder?
Yes.
Artella?
Yes.
Trup?
Yes.
Ister?
Okay, the next item actually, under discussion, would be the 2014 budget. Again, as I noted, this evening, it's a matter of really protocol that we have to make sure that we have a vote on the first reading of the budget. There's a draft in everyone's packets this evening that basically breaks down revenues and expenses in such a way that for the first reading, we'd be looking to vote to move forward with this draft budget with a two mil tax increase. Please note, however, that as in years past, it's always been the council objective to work over the next few weeks, come to terms with a budget, try to mitigate obviously any type of tax increase. Can't necessarily ever guarantee that we won't have one. Understand that two mil would pretty much push us to our limit. But at this time this evening, we'd just like to make a, have a vote on the first draft. And then between now and the 23rd of December, we'll make modifications at each budget meetings, as well as at future council meetings, to have actually a budget by the 23rd that we're all very comfortable with, or at least as comfortable as we can get. So, any questions, I guess, on that initial draft as shown for this evening? If not, I'd like to at least make a motion that we proceed to take a vote on the existing 2014 budget in draft form for the first reading. Sorry. Thank you. Welcome.
Artella?
Yeah.
Trup?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Probably next thing, just going to table that, and so, at least, okay. Then I guess, as with, we have with this history of town, in the winter months going into the holiday season, we've talked about making parking free on metered streets. I guess Kevin, is that something you wanted to address this evening?
Yeah, it's something we do every year, for the downtown shopping events on metered streets, um, just waiting for the party, meters and happy holidays. Uh, mark, all meters, is it? All metered streets, yeah. Streets, not, not part of the, the metered streets.
So I guess, do you want to make that in form of a motion, or?
Yeah, I want to make that in form of a motion.
One second.
Second.
Trup?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Artella?
Yes.
Before we move on to a general audience comment, just want to make an announcement again regarding the budget. The next budget meeting we'll be having, a public meeting will be here this coming Monday, the 18th of November, beginning at 6:00 PM in council chambers. Certainly invite everyone who has an interest in participating to attend. With that, I guess we open it up to audience comment. Any other questions or items you'd like to discuss? Yes, sir.
Scott Schwartz, I brought up the issue of the feral cat situation, and I think at the last meeting, I was asked by one of the councilmen, or perhaps the mayor, how Northumberland was doing with the ordinance that they approved.
Mr. Snyder, may I, um, we're meeting on the 17th, but we're Northumberland is setting down to get together and all the others. So myself and Terry's and I go to attend that meeting to find out what's going on and what direction they're heading. So by next meeting, we should have what their kind of directions they're heading, and we'll do all the others. So we're meeting on the 17th. So shut, whatever, shut door meeting? Non-public meeting, okay?
My, my, my understanding though, is that the ordinance isn't going into effect until January 1st. So I don't know if they're going to be able to give you information on what the success or challenges of it is number one. And number two, I would just like to say that last time we had the last meeting, another audience member said feeding the cats has no impact on their travel or their proliferation in the community. Certainly everything I've read on the internet is, if you feed them, they'll come, they'll multiply, and also attract other vermin, stumps, rats, etc.
I mean, I see one or two cats here in my neighborhoods that they make their rounds, the front door, back door, down the street. And it's like, it's like a route they run every day. So I agree. I think feeding does-
I think if it's somebody who perpetually feeds them, though you end up with colonies. And it's not as though they make their rounds, you know, that's their problem. But I appreciate that.
I mean, I watch two cats go from, leave 11th Street, probably up at Mr. Swimmer's house, a big yellow one. There's that big yellow one? So, I mean, it's gotta be the 12th Street and my street, and it's a good line to have.
But honestly, there's situations where there's colonies of ten, fifteen, twenty that just proliferate where they're being fed continuously. So, I appreciate that. So you said the 17th, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, follow one, yeah. I'm curious on our new dog, about the city taking out maybe insurance on the dog, on our new girl dog?
Chief, do you have any comments?
Well, he's training right now, ready till next month. We had talked about that before. My intent was to see where the budget goes and proceed from there.
Yeah, you know, everybody will think that, but I think that they can't-
We did talk to pretty insurance after the loss of the last one. There are some policies out there. But again, it depends on, as Mr. Snyder said, depends on the budget.
I think, yeah, I want to hit the budget, too. I thought we got expensive, should have been joined.
What, no, any other comments also?
Regina Russell, at the last meeting, council member, I had inquired about how much money was being accumulated for the houses that were under demolition. Do you have that told you tonight?
No, not this evening. And honestly, it's only because of the fact that we're working on getting the budget numbers and such together. But we will get that for you.
Before you leave office, is there a audit done so that you're not blamed for any thing wrong with the funds after you leave office?
Actually, annually, we go through an extensive auditing process that we have an outside auditing firm that audits the entire city books. That's done every year. It will continue to be done certainly in my absence and whoever comes next. That's always something that's done.
Again, I'd like to repeat myself. I've been here coming to the meetings now for over a year, and I'm still trying to address Council Member Ister's property at 406 Walnut Street. Each time I come to the meetings and I vocally express something, it could be naming three ordinances, or complaining about something different that the tenant is doing. It seems like he's told something from someone that permits him to continue doing what he does. And it just seems like, why is this person not following any type of ordinances? Why isn't he being fined? If in the three years that I've been complaining, he was fined one time for one of the things that he's been permitted to do, I don't think he'd be doing any of these things. The last time I mentioned, after bringing pictures, that the dumpster that he was permitted to park there had warning stickers on it for children not to play, and for it not to be parked where it was parked. But now, we have another dumpster that's older, it's rusted, it's higher in height. And when I look out my window in my neighborhood, I'm looking at, to me, dumping grounds. I would like a little consideration in asking this gentleman, or the city, or Mr. Ister finding some of the place for this gentleman to park these things. It rained, it rained all day and night, and it's uncovered, it's collecting water, that's standing water. These are health issues as well. I, I don't understand where anyone's integrity is about this. If it wasn't Councilman Ister's property, I sincerely believe that this would have been handled, and this gentleman would not have been able to continue doing what he's doing. Let him park it around the corner in front of his property, on his block. There's a railroad, I mean, there's even a larger parking lot near the high school. Why does it have to be on a residential street, not making any of the homeowners' properties look good? Quarterly, we get a newsletter from the city that's constantly asking homeowners to be accountable for the beautification of the city. They ask the tenants to also have this responsibility. But yet, some way and somehow, code can come and investigate, but they don't seem to be able to enforce anything. And I'm going to keep coming until somebody, I mean, you, I know you're trying to make a point to me about who's got the power. But this is not about power, it's about the value of someone's neighborhood and their property. And I certainly am a homeowner, and I pay my taxes, and I would like the same consideration that you would like if it was your neighborhood, and you had to look out your window and see what I'm looking at. Thank you for listening.
Paul, if you want me to speak about the demolition, because I can tell you what we spent and what we paid.
Well, I don't think we're actually looking at just, if I'm hearing you correctly. Again, just to make sure I understood your question. You're really looking at the cumulative costs of redevelopment authority versus income on houses, so just ultimately just seeing what it's not.
Yes, no one's been able to tell us anytime I ask.
We'll have to get the final numbers, but certainly feel free if you ask.
Same question.
The, the CDPG funds that we spend on demolition, it's not meant to make those funds back. So we've spent probably two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars of CDPG money to clean up these blighted properties. We've made maybe twenty-five-thousand dollars. Only thirty percent of what we make can go back into demolition, so the rest of it has to go into other CDPG projects like Chestnut Street. That's the basic, those aren't exact, but that's about what we've done.
It's Jamie?
Yeah.
So Jamie, they don't sell that lot? The city, since the city is, that's, that to me is like eminent domain, so the city doesn't-
The city takes possession of it.
Yes.
We demolish it.
Yes.
And then they auction it off to the highest bidder for fair market value.
The land?
Yes.
Okay, and that land-
Some of the dollars in the city.
That land out of, I believe it's approximately several properties, has only gained twenty-five-thousand dollars.
Right, the land-
And out of that twenty-five thousand, thirty percent you get is what you're telling.
No, thirty percent can go back into the demolition pot. The rest of it is still CDPG money for a different CDPG project. And, and lots aren't worth very much, because generally they're very small, they don't need code for building on. You can only sell them mostly to the neighbor for a side yard. There are a few that are larger that we've sold for a larger amount of money that somebody may be able to build on. But most often, they're just small side lot pieces that you wouldn't be able to build on nowadays within the codes. So, right, with the CDPG money, when you're doing demolition and then selling it, you're not making your money back. You're just getting rid of the bling and tools. That's all you're doing. That's the point of using CDPG to do it, to get rid of the bling.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Becky Andrews, I have a question. When you sign a contract to have work done within the city, and you accept the lowest bid, do you check their references as to what kind of work they do in other municipalities?
There's typically a due diligence process, and also, we always turn contracts over to city solicitors to review those in advance, and ensure that we have, if necessary, things like proper bonding, certificates of insurance. And certainly, those are more often than not the most common things that you always have in place with a particular contractor before you actually execute the agreement. As far as specifics on contacting the referral list, I'd have to really turn that to the department heads that work those respective contracts. But again, normally, we at least go through that process of making sure we have all of those things in hand before we actually formally execute.
The city didn't get a very good deal when they had this company replace the gas lines.
Well, see, now, that's, that's totally different, ma'am. That's totally up to the gas company to stop the company to do that. We don't do any kind of bid work with them or any kind of contract work. The gas company comes in and they do their work that they need to be done to perform and fix it. Now, I know they're not doing it right, believe me, while they're on the phone talking to these people all the time, trying to make sure they patch these holes as soon as possible. But that has, that is not a contracted bid, that has nothing to do with us hiring them. That is their own work that they come and perform themselves. Where that's a total different, different scenario than us doing a whole, I mean, a Chestnut Street project or Wolferton Street project. That is them coming and doing their work as a public utility.
The utility companies by nature have a right to be able to obviously tear up streets, et cetera, in order to repair and or put stuff in. Unfortunately, what municipalities always end up having to fight them over is taking it back to the point where it was before they started to tear it up.
It's a long, long fight. It's, it's a long, long fight.
And most municipalities don't have as deep a pockets as what the utility companies have. So in the scheme of things, it's a fight that really you end up more often than not losing. However, you know, to your point, public opinion does make a difference. And certainly, if you reach out to the utility companies or write letters and things like that, complaining about it to Public Utility Commission and others about the fact that they historically don't do things in certain communities the way that you'd like, at least if nothing else, they have that on their record, and there's a better shot that they'll fix it the next time. But again, it's going to take a lot of letters in order to make that happen.
I guarantee you, we're on the phone with them every week about these problems.
Well, let me tell you, they filled that, that hole in, and they filled the one on Raspberry Avenue and Fourth Street. And the one on Fourth Street and Raspberry Avenue is sinking again, and they haven't even touched the one in-
We've been in contact with them, and likes me tell them how, what to do with them, what kind of stuff to put down under, so it doesn't sink. And it's a, that's how I'm going to fight with them. It really is.
One thing that actually, again, you always, these are big problems, right? It's nice to think it's small, but it is a big problem. One option is that actually, it'd be nice to write your legislator, okay? For example, where municipalities should have the right that if a job's not done to our satisfaction, that we can fix it, fix it right and bill the utility, okay? So that if PPL tears up a line, or UGI tears up a street, and they don't come back and fix it right, well, we should be able to go do that work, fix it to your satisfaction, and then send them the bill. That's going to do one of two things. It's either going to give us the option of getting it right, or it's going to force them to start to do things correctly the first time. We don't have that option right now. But that is something that you could actually, again, write your local legislator about and say, hey, push utilities to do a better job. Unfortunately, it's something that's out of our hands.
Yeah, because we, when we spend good money to repaint a whole new street, and sometimes within a year, year and a half, we try to hold them off as long as possible again, and they're in digging it up. That's a waste of taxpayers' money. I mean, that, that burns to be up more than anything in the world when that happens. Because we go and we make a street look brand new, and they come and dig a four-by-eight hole up less, and don't fix it properly. What a waste of money in my eyes.
Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
Cannot, yeah, stupid. The cameras. Um, where are they monitored?
Where are the cameras monitored?
The cameras, city cameras, who monitors them?
The cameras are at this moment in time really in place to record, store data for investigative purposes whenever they're needed. So if an incident happens, they can go to the camera system and record. There's not, at this point in time, a big screen where somebody's sitting there watching what's going on all the time. And really, you can't afford to do that, because you're paying them to have a police officer sit on their duff all day, watch TV, basically. The system wasn't designed with that in mind. I know there was a hand in the back corner.
Third time.
Very patient, yes. So thank you for being-
Third time. Lori Johnson.
You gotta come to the front row next time, it's a lot easier.
Listen, I've been coming to these meetings for a long time, and I've been hearing this lady complain about Jim Ister. Let me tell you something. We are landlocked in our business. I'm held hostage by Mr. Danny, because I have a dumpster, the only place I can dump my garbage. It was between his building and ours. And he said he owns the alley, so we can't get another person in there to bring us garbage. So maybe what Jim is doing is a dumpster. I don't know. I haven't checked out his place, I haven't been down there, I don't really care. But maybe that's what he's using it for. So if you're using it that, maybe it has no other place to put it. Maybe it can't go anywhere else. Have you checked that out? I don't know. But maybe that's what he's using it. So maybe before you keep complaining, that you've been complaining for a year about, you need to check that out. Because I know, he might be stuck, just like I am.
I appreciate what you're saying, but the garage, and like you said, you haven't been there, so please come check out 406 Walnut Street.
I will, but I'm just saying-
And it's a garage that he is renting to a tenant. It is a tenant-
Okay, so maybe he is the owner of the place.
That Mr. Ister has the authority to say, please move your dumpster to the railway track in back of you, and move it, your park in front of your-
He might not be able to, and I don't know whether he can or not.
So I appreciate you standing up for Mr. Ister, I'm sure he does as well.
Oh, I'm just saying, he's, he's a good guy who does good stuff, and I just don't want to make any mistake in his doing something.
I didn't know this school with him, I don't know him personally, thank you.
I don't know him either, but, I'm just saying, that's just my opinion. So he might be stuck between a rock and a hard place, just as we are.
No, he's not. I'm stuck as a resident and a citizen.
Okay, well, I guess if there's no, yeah, Mr. Snack.
Dan Saxton, Secretary of Sunbury Fire Department, and I have a comment I'd like to make about the fire department. I know Mr. Rose will probably echo my comments. It's, it's no secret to anyone who understands the inner workings of the Sunbury Fire Department, the individual fire stations, that many of them are struggling in town. Struggling with revenues, and also struggling, struggling with people, okay? Young people aren't coming Young people aren't coming out like they used to, and we need volunteers. And so, I would urge anybody who knows anybody with young people, get involved with your local fire department. This isn't anything that you haven't heard before, I know you have, but I wanted to just reiterate that. The other thing I wanted to mention, from the revenue standpoint, we do some fundraisers every year, okay? One of our biggest fundraisers is a car rental that we do each year that has been very successful for us for the last six years. This Saturday, okay, I'd like to invite all of you, we're doing a, in cooperation with Ford Motor Company, not just Ford Motor Company up in 4th Street, but Ford Motor Company, Dearborn, Michigan. They do a test drive for your community type of thing, and what it is, is if you are willing to go take a test drive of a new Ford vehicle, no cost, no obligation, and no salesman will call, okay? For everybody who go takes a test drive and fills out a little survey for what did you like about the car, what did you not like about the car, what do you want to see in a new car, the Sunbury Fire Department will receive a twenty-dollar bill, okay? Doesn't cost us anything, doesn't cost you anything, but we're doing this this Saturday from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. It's down in front of the Shikleimi High School. One of the stations, I think, is going to have a refreshment tent set up, they're going